I was going to bring each of you up individually from that corner, but you all are sitting there. So all I can do is just introduce you and make two apologies. One is, we have so many candidates that we ran out of high-level chairs. So I ended up...
I want a soapbox.
So since we did it alphabetically, I didn't pick or choose anyone, went by your name. Stephen got the honor of being on the... What do you want to... How do you want to label that, Stephen?
The first tier.
There you go. There you go. That's good. And Mark, in my agenda, I said Mike Robertson and not Mark, so I apologize for that.
Being a pharmacist, you wouldn't believe the names I get called.
So I apologize for that misrepresentation in the agenda, not tonight, not during the forum. So Stephen Claffey, number one. Eric Curran... And who is our new candidate, by the way, 2020? Eric Curran?
Curran.
Curran, excuse me, is an incumbent. Amy Darby is a candidate this year. James Harrington is an incumbent. Ophi Kair is our vice chair and an incumbent. And Nitch Narduzzi is a candidate. Andrea Oaks is incumbent. And Mark Robertson is a candidate. So there you go. And the forum begins. This event is scheduled for one hour and will be strictly timed. James Mill, our vice chair of the Stanton Democratic Committee, is going to be the official timer. And it's because he's technology savvy, he'll have it down. Candidates in sequence will first receive two minutes to share an introduction of themselves in their platform, and that will be done alphabetically. So Stephen, you'll get to go first on that, and then it'll just come down the line. Then we will progress into several prepared questions with each candidate receiving 60 seconds to respond. 60 seconds, or the beeper goes off. For this question portion of the forum, the first to respond to each question, and then we will then move to the next person. So it's not always Stephen will be first. They will go down the line, and they will go from left to right as they sit on the dais. Candidates, feel free to ask me to restate the question at any point. Finally, at the conclusion of the prepared questions, each candidate, again alphabetically, seated on the dais, will receive 60 seconds for closing remarks. And I'll kind of come back and remind you what each step is along the way. If there is time left over at the end, we will allow time for two or three audience questions, as much as time allows. With each of the eight candidates allowed to answer that question for 30 seconds. Please keep in mind, we do want to adhere to our one-hour limit unless this audience says, "We want more." And then we may go into some audience participation. Everything sound good?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to start with two-minute introductions with Stephen Claffey.
Good evening, I'm Steve Claffey. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm a retired retail manager with 41 years' experience, and I've been active in many of the nonprofit sectors since my return to Stanton 23 years ago. I'm currently in my fourth term as chair of the Salvation Army Advisory Board. I'm a longtime Rotarian, past president of that club. I've served on Blue Ridge Community College Foundation Board. I'm currently the investment chair for the community foundation in my fifth year. I'm seeking election to city council because I feel there's time for a change. When nine candidates file for four council seats, an alarm should sound. Clearly dissatisfaction is evident. City council must serve in a nonpartisan manner to serve all of our citizens respectfully, and hopefully, our May election cycle separates us from November party alliances. I'm concerned about major infrastructure projects that remained unscheduled and unfunded. I'm concerned about local contractors' reluctance to do jobs in Stanton because of the difficulty in obtaining permits and inspections. I'm concerned about Stanton's role as a land development company. I'm concerned about a static population growth over 50 years with no growth. I'm concerned we claim we can't pay for education while we waste dollars elsewhere. Let me be a fresh voice for Stanton citizens, be a fresh set of ears to listen to all citizens, and be a fresh set of eyes to look at things differently. It's time for a change. Thank you. How do I do timelines?
You have 15 seconds left.
Eric?
Thanks so much. Thanks for holding this forum, I really appreciate it. And thanks to you all for coming. We're not used to seeing this room so full. It's like the old Maytag repairman, you know, we're kind of lonely sometimes. I think there was a meeting in December where the room was maybe fuller than this, but usually it's pretty quiet, so I'm so glad to see you all here. So I'm Eric Curran, and I've been on city council two terms, which is eight years. And I didn't have the good fortune to grow up in Stanton, but I was smart enough to move here as soon as I had a chance. I went to Washington and Lee for college, and I've been living in the valley on and off for about 35 years, and I've been in Stanton for the last 14. And during most of that time, I have worked as a consultant in the solar energy industry. And one of my clients here is a company called Secure Futures, and they're the ones who put the solar panels on the Augusta County schools. So I think if you go out to Clymore Elementary School, you can see a beautiful ground-mounted solar array, right from the library. It's wonderful for the students. Would sure love to see Stanton have something like that. But I have a big interest in clean energy and the environment, and that's one of the things I focused on in city council. And if I should earn your support, which I hope I will, I respectfully request for you to vote for me on May 5th, if I should earn your support, I would like to keep, continue pushing to help Stanton, to make Stanton a greener, more prosperous place, a place that's more fair for everybody, regardless of their color, regardless of their income, whether they vote red or blue. I agree with Steve that what I like about local politics is it's nonpartisan. And I don't like to see national issues brought into Stanton. I like to see us focus on stuff that has to do with Stanton. And so I intend to, if you reelect me, keep focusing on economic development moving us forward, completing the projects that we've begun that show a lot of promise, continuing to promote tourism. Tourists are great because they come to town and spend money and don't use our services. So, thank you so much.
Amy?
Good evening, I'm Amy Darby, and I'm glad to be here with you all tonight. Thank you for hosting this forum. The reason that I'm running for city council is because I've had many, many folks approach me and ask me to please step up and run and be a strong representative voice for them on city council. It was a pleasure and an honor for me to serve on the Stanton City School Board for eight years, and I learned a lot about how local government works during that time, budgets, capital improvement plans, just local government in general. And I really believe that I have the skillset to lead on Stanton City Council and be a voice for everyone. I was raised here, I grew up on the west end of Stanton in Hillcrest. My parents were small business owners in the city for over 50 years. My dad had the mattress shop on Bridge Street, and my mom worked at Western State. And I have worked for the Commonwealth of Virginia for over 25 years, getting close to that 30-year mark. Started off at local social services, and then downtown at the juvenile probation office, supervising juveniles and helping families in crisis. And then for the last several years, I have supervised the Rockingham-Harrisonburg Court Service Unit. I graduated from Robert E. Lee High School and Mary Baldwin College, and was very active in my college year's life. I participated in many things, play, I was captain of the swim team, was on the honor council, and I guess one of the biggest things, too, was it was during those years that I met a young man from Virginia Military Institute who matriculated from the eastern shore of Virginia. Lucky for me, he likes Stanton a lot also. And so 26 years ago, this past December, we got married, and we have made this our home. During that time, there's been opportunities for us to relocate, but my family is here, my friends are here. I love Stanton, this is my hometown, and this is not about me, it's about the city.
Time.
Hello, everybody, I'm Jim Harrington, and thanks for all coming out, and thanks from the Stanton Democratic Committee for managing to create such a crowd as this. I have been on city council for about 10 years now. I was appointed, you may recall, when Mr. Dick Bell was elected to the House of Delegates, he had to vacate his seat on council. And there was an elaborate Star Chamber process that was followed to select his replacement, and I was the survivor of that process. And so, and then I've run for reelection, each time I've had to, since then. And it's been such a privilege to serve on city council. Prior to that, I had served two-plus terms on Stanton City School Board, from 1995 until 2006, with a little break in there. And had done that, and also the service on city council as part of a sense of duty to the city, and a sense of, actually, actual gratitude to the city. This has been a spectacular place for my family to live in. My wife Constance, who's here tonight, and my daughter Kate, who is a graduate of Bessie Weller, one of her teachers is here, Bessie Weller, Shelburne Middle School, and Robert E. Lee High School, and is now off in Boston, making her way. And I was keenly aware all the time that we were living our lives here as a family, that what a blessing it was to be doing that in a city like this. And so it's been a privilege for me to have had an opportunity to serve both on the school board and then more recently on the city council. I seek reelection because I am keenly interested in some initiatives, particularly that the city is working on. The schools, I think, are on the threshold of serious, serious step forward, and I want to be a part of that. And you'll have to wait to hear the first other name.
Good evening, I'm Ophi Kair, and I am also running for reelection. I would also like to thank the Democratic Party for sponsoring this, and thanks also for coming out. When we get into resumes, I was talking about Rotary today, today that there's too much stuff there. So I have served as a past president of the Shenandoah Valley Kiwanis. I've served two terms, I'm sorry, six years, on our school board, and part of that as vice chair of the school board. I'm now vice mayor of the city of Stanton, and this is completing my third term, and I'm running for reelection a fourth term. I've also served on the executive board and was vice president of the Virginia Municipal League for the state of Virginia, serving all cities and towns throughout our state, and looking at passing legislation or trying to get legislation to our representatives to be passed to represent us all. When I sit up here, my goal is to continue doing what Stanton is doing. I was on the Industrial Development Authority, where I also served as chairman some years back, actually for 14 years. And the Stonewall Jackson Hotel happened, and the Blackfriars Playhouse happened. The citizens of the city of Stanton were very upset when those two projects were happening because they said they just weren't viable product, project for our city. Yet I'd like to know, you know, how many people haven't been to either of those two places? And I'd like to also compliment them because of the service that they give to this city. I'm still employed, I still work full-time, probably 60 hours a week, as a senior representative for a country, a development company, countryside. I think we've done a tremendous job with the purchases we've made, with the things we've done as a city. I think we need to complete that. There are many things that we've done, the downtown development that has made Stanton a place to model at. The fact that the Stanton Creative Community Foundation was funded during this period of time, which helps small businesses open up.
Hi, I'm Nitch Narduzzi. I moved to Stanton in 2007 as a single mom with two young kids because I had the opportunity to purchase a Hattie House.
All right.
Some of you probably even worked on that house, so thank you for that. My connection to our community evolved during my time working at the Stanton Downtown Development Association as their bookkeeper for several years, where I witnessed the amazing results of the downtown revitalization through the collective efforts of residents, business owners, nonprofits, and of course, the city. I have a strong background in working with nonprofits, most recently the Institute for Reform and Solutions, to advocate for legislative reform, and to organize community-based collaborations that address a multitude of issues such as patient advocacy, criminal justice reform to reduce incarceration and recidivism, kind of a passion among, gaps in our systems, and Institute for Mental Health and Substance Treatment, affordable housing and homelessness, adult education, skills training, and employment opportunities, and transportation needs. There's a general theme of these things. These are issues that have some effect on our community at large, but more importantly, a disproportionate effect on our most vulnerable populations. I'm running for city council because I'm driven by compassionate action, and I see this as an opportunity to serve my community in bigger and more effective ways. I owe so much to you, my community, and simply want to be involved in the process of giving back in whatever way that I can. I'm not so much concerned about the economic development direction of the city, I'm actually really excited about the things that I've learned recently in the path forward for us. And like some council members have mentioned, we're on the verge of really big and positive things coming. And what I want is the opportunity to be here for that, so that I can question, how are we using our money effectively to be a good steward of your taxpayer dollars?
Andrea?
Hi, my name is Andrea Oaks, and I now serve on the city council, and I'm seeking reelection for another four years. A little background information, I moved to Stanton a little over 27 years ago. I brought my husband with me, we married a little over 27 years ago. His name's Kenneth Oaks. I have, I'm the mother of five, I have two daughters, Jaclyn and Alex, I have a son, Ryland, I have an English Bulldog named General Patton, and a cat named Benedito, and he's the head of the household. Like I said, I've been on council now for 12 years, and we've done a lot on council. The city of Stanton was named the number-one city to live in the United States, so that says something. That says something about not only the city government, but also the citizens. As far as I'm concerned, we have been able to promote a lot of economic development, and there's a lot of potentials out there that I would like to see carry through. I'd like to see more businesses brought into the Stanton Crossing, as well as the Green Hills Industrial Park. I really want to see the education promoted in this area. It is doing phenomenal. Our school system has reached a high point, and I want to continue to see the renovation of the Stanton High School. I want to be a part of what I started out with, with the city council, and I want to see all of this through, because it's very important for the future of our citizens. I would like to not only see increased economic growth to help offset the tax base, but I would also like to have more citizen task force. I want the citizens to have more of an input in how the city decides its future. I also want to be able to be a part of seeing Stanton once again listed as the number-one city to live in the United States.
Hi, my name is Mark Robertson, and I'm a lifelong resident of this city. And I, again, want to thank the Stanton Democratic Committee for holding this event, and all of you for attending. I see a lot of friendly faces out there, and people that I've known for many, many I started out in the city, going to Northside Elementary, now TC McSwain, then on to John Lewis Junior High School, and then to a proud graduate of Robert E. Lee High School. I then went to Bridgewater, where I graduated, and then went on to MCV to get my pharmacy degree. And I've been back here practicing ever since. I've seen a lot of people, I've raised families from young kids coming in and having their children, and now I'm having some of those children bringing their children in. So I know a lot about Stanton. As far as what I've done in this city, I am currently the treasurer and a sitting elder with Second Presbyterian Church right up the street here, serve as a member of the Elks because of their, what they do for children, what they do to help people out. I also serve as a pharmacist, member of the Stanton Augusta County Waynesboro Drug Court. So I'm very proud of that as well. And all of these, the biggest thing is I've served 18 years on the Stanton Augusta Rescue Squad, and am a life member there. As far as wanting to run for council, I didn't at first. I had a lot of people come and said, "Mark, please, please run," because I think that that is what is needed. We need to get it, and we need to make this city a city that is open for business. We need to make this city want builders and people to come here. And right now, it's hard to get builders to even want to do it. We need to try to increase all of those businesses. Thank you.
Thank you all. Now begins the prepared questions, and each of you, we're going to start with Stephen, come down the line, and then the second question will go to Eric, third question to Amy. Everyone has a turn with each question, and 60 seconds to respond. First question. According to census estimates, Stanton's poverty rate is roughly 15%, higher than both state and national averages, despite an unemployment rate of just 2.4, one of the lowest in the nation. What would you do as city council to help lower-income people, keeping in mind Virginia is a villain-ruled state?
Stephen? The first thing we need to do is get growth coming back into the city, and the reason this is not happening is because our city offices itself are restricting construction and growth in businesses to come. If we do get things rolling again, where people can come, get a building permit, then we will have jobs for these people, and we will get off the list. I believe you quoted it, 15%?
Uh huh.
This is all a matter of having jobs for people. If we are losing our young people down the road to other areas where they can find jobs, for instance, go look at Harrisonburg, which has grown from 23,000 people in 1970 to 48,000 people today. There are jobs to be had up there, and our young people are going elsewhere. We need to get things going here.
Same question, Eric. Just let me know if you need me to repeat it.
Sure, so it's about the 15% poverty rate? So first of all, that's terrible. That's awful. And so I think as compassionate people, one thing I've been very impressed by in Stanton is, like the folks sitting up here, the folks down there, everybody's on three volunteer boards. And so I think folks in Stanton are willing to give their time, and their money, and their resources, and their smarts, we have a lot of smart people here, to solve problems. This is a problem that a lot of places our size have. And so I think we're going to have to do something different than other places do. I think we should look towards the future, we should look towards industries of the future, and I would humbly submit that my industry, the solar power industry, is the fastest-growing job creator in the United States. And if we didn't have monopoly utilities and special interests of dirty energy stopping solar, we could have solar panels on half the houses in Stanton. And those are good-paying jobs, they're skilled jobs, and they're jobs that you can't outsource to some other country. So I'm actually pushing for Stanton to get 100% clean energy, and I think this will be one of the best job creators we could do.
Time.
Thank you.
I think that, you know, I agree, that's terrible. It's concerning to me. I know our schools, we have over half of our students receive free reduced lunches, which goes very much in line with what you're speaking to. And so it's an issue that we can't overlook, and I think that, I agree, that, you know, the growth is something that needs to happen because our business growth and our population has been flat. And so we have to really push hard to have some strong, aggressive economic development to bring those jobs in, and not just in Stanton Crossing, but all over Stanton. There's lots that can, you know, lots of opportunities. Stanton is a great place, and I think if we could all work together and get the right people at the tables, then we could start having those conversations to really develop job opportunities that would lend itself to, you know, folks from all across the spectrum. And that would possibly bring in more...
Time.
Jim? I think the real solution is, of course, a long-term solution, and it involves a number of agencies, principally, well, not principally, but what I want to talk about is education. Education has to be a large part of the solution to endemic poverty. And when you say that the poverty level is 15%, even though unemployment is at record lows, that's an indicator of, not just that, it's not an indicator that there aren't jobs around, it's an indicator that the jobs are not the kinds of jobs that you can support a family in. And so it's great to have jobs around. I love having 2.3% low unemployment, but I want jobs, the kind of job that a young person can support a family in. And the economic development efforts of the city, especially with respect to the Stanton Crossing, are aimed day and night toward that end, and I would support those aims.
60 seconds, go really quick. And I would have to agree with Dr. Harrington. I've been talking about this 15% poverty level now for over 12 years, and there hasn't been much of a solution since then. I will tell you that I also serve as liaison to the Economic Development Board, and I will tell you that those people meet every month, and they're quoting the exact same figures, and talking about what we can do to remedy this situation. They're constantly looking for business and industry to come into the area. I will say that 10 years ago or so, we suffered a huge depression, some people like to call it a recession, it was a depression, and things just stopped. I will say, as far as Stanton's growth, Stanton has grown 5.2% over the past nine years. So the indication that it's not growing is a fallacy. It's not growing quick enough, and we need to, yes, we need to work on the income for our constituents as much as we can. I'm rushing, and I'm waiting for them to...
Time.
Okay, so for me, the issue is pretty personal. What you might not know about me is I'm currently disabled, right? It looks like a disability, but I qualified for disability because of my Crohn's disease. So I actually live just above the poverty line, at about $14,000 a year. So I understand this in a very personal way, and that gives me a different perspective when I'm addressing these issues for city council. But the things that are needed for people living in poverty certainly are jobs and also affordable housing, and that's a big concern of mine. We have this opportunity in the west end with the HUD grant to address that issue, so that's something that the city's already working on. I'm super excited about getting in on that with them. A lot of the answers are going to come from collaborative efforts with other community stakeholders that think outside of the box, that are working together, that can bring information to city council, for us then to take to city employees and say, "How do we do this? How does this affect our community?"
Time.
Yes. I feel like it should be a buzzer, like, "Wheee!"
Have a beef if you prefer.
Okay, I'm the chair of the Community Action Partnership in this area, and one thing I've learned by going through the grants is that we need to start early. We need to be able to properly fund our early hit start program, we need to properly fund the Shenandoah Valley Social Service Department, so education can begin as soon as possible. We need to be able to properly fund housing. One thing I've heard, that we do need more affordable housing, we need more low-income housing, and we need to be able to provide transportation to jobs. That seems to be a big problem. The city needs to look into that, we need to do better. We need to continue to develop a mixed use out of the Stanton Crossing. Thank you.
Okay, listening to all of them, and I agree, we need to look at it as a multifaceted approach. We do need to increase education. Education is what needs to, for a person to have, get better education, if they get better education, they can get better jobs, get better pay increases. Therefore, that's something we need to look at later on as far as increasing our educational funds. I also think, as Andrea said, we need to look into transportation. But the main thing is, again, is looking into trying to decrease the obstacles to get better-paying jobs in here by looking at getting better buildings. Builders don't want to come to Stanton because we go through too much red tape. So it's a multifaceted approach. I think we can tackle it, but we've got to do better in all of those departments. My lens didn't go on.
Would you prefer a beep or a voice saying time?
Voice.
Time?
A voice isn't.
Okay. Just thought I'd throw that out there. Second question, and Eric, you'll start this one. The first city to adopt the council manager form of government was Stanton, which hired its first city manager in nineteen oh eight. We were progressive even then. Every city in Virginia then followed our lead. I like to think we're all proud of this weird little fact. Two-part question. Number one, how in your view should city council and the city manager's office balance their work and their productivity? In light of the coronavirus and recent extreme weather, how should the city prepare for emergencies?
All right, so I'll try to get thirty seconds. All right, so first of all, proud of the city manager form of government. It's got big advantages. It gives us professional executive management like you would have in business, which I think has given us very efficient government, cost-effective, good value for money. The challenge of the council manager form of government is that council could become like a rubber stamp body, where the manager and the staff come up with all the ideas and the council just asks a few polite questions and then we all vote seven to zero to say yes. We don't need that. We need good oversight and I think our current council has provided that kind of oversight. And we need council members to bring new ideas, sometimes, not all the time. Sometimes we just need to work with what the staff does. But we do need some new ideas. So I've tried to bring new ideas ever since I've been on city council. My first idea was to oppose the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. I brought that to city council, we all worked on that, Stanton voted, we became one of two jurisdictions in Virginia to oppose this dangerous and unnecessary project.
Okay, the city council, city manager relationship, it's like an employer-employee relationship, but it works best when everyone knows what lane they're supposed to stay in. You know, the city manager is in charge with making sure the day-to-day operations are accomplished and council oversees that. And department heads report to council, council then, city manager then reports to council. And it's the same thing in a school system with superintendent. And when there's good communication, open communication, meaningful evaluations, information sharing, it's a really, it's a really good process and I'm glad that we have that. You know, outside of personnel issues and serious legal issues, local government needs to be transparent and citizens need to feel like they can trust it. And I think that, you know, in the city manager-council relationship, if you're transparent, you can keep that rubber stamp kind of dynamic that he's talking about from happening.
I neglected to mention in my lengthy biography earlier on that I worked at Mary Baldwin College for my career here in Stanton and retired in twenty sixteen. And that career in higher education is a reminder, maybe a good preparation for the city manager, city council form of government that you asked about. College president, university president reports to a board of trustees, which has an interesting set of tasks and an interesting set of parameters. They govern what they do and what matters they get involved in. And I think it's, there's a lot of good analogies between that structure and a city council is it works with a city manager. You don't want to micromanage, you want to give broad direction, you want to help define the institution. And I think that's what city council does, is define the city at any given time, in any given era. And so, and we have been blessed in this city by excellent, excellent professional city managers, the last three or four in particular.
So I'll have to pick up on what Dr. Harrington is saying. We have been blessed with a good city manager, we have a good one now. The city manager-council relationship is a unique one in that the city manager does manage the rest of the employees of the city. The city manager works for city council. There are very few things that happen in this city that we don't get wind of or know through talking with our city manager or the deputy city manager. There are things that we can't always speak about in public because it would affect that business or entity that may or may not be coming to the city. I trust what we have with the city manager form of government and I don't think of getting excluded from a conversation that pertained to any of our citizens in the city.
I'll start with the second part of the question first, about how the cities respond to emergencies. And some of the best advice that I was given from a friend when I asked about whether he thought about me running for city council is he said, know what you don't know. And that I actually don't know about. So that would be something that I would work hard to learn about and have an answer for you at some point. But about the relationship between city council and city manager. City council hires one person, that is the manager, so it's really important that they vet that person well. And I think they did a really good job in their last hire. I know that I've had the opportunity to meet with several city employees just in the last week alone as I trained for this marathon of a forum. I have so much information in my head just from those meetings. But Les Vogelberg from the city manager's office, Phil Traer from finance, and then Billy Vaughn for economic development, they were very accessible and they were very generous with their time and the information that they would share with me.
Okay, as far as the council management form of government, it works. Not only do we have it here in Stanton, but it's used all over the United States in different parts of the world. In our budget, it shows that the citizens have top priority. They're the ones that create the will of the city. The city council listens to the citizens and it's the city manager's responsibility to carry out the will of the citizens through the direction of city council. It works. As far as the coronavirus, we actually did submit a publication stating that the city is working closely with medical facilities, keeping an eye on the virus to see how it's affecting the western part of Virginia. And all of that is transferred through the communications director, which we are seeking a new communications director. Our last one retired, so if anyone wants to apply, thank you.
Okay, as far as the city manager form of government, it was nineteen oh eight. It's a very good type of government. I do believe that the city manager form of council government does work. We, as a council, would need to depend and rely on the expertise that our city manager and the department heads give. But then there does sometimes come a time when council needs to say, no, don't spend as much money sometimes as they want to. As far as the coronavirus, I think we need, as a community, we need to try to calm, as a council, calm some of the fears that are out there. We also need to work very closely with our local health department and the hospital. We need to realize that every year, we lose between sixteen and sixty thousand people every year due to the common flu. This is something we don't understand, so therefore we're nervous. I understand it.
They are not comparable. Coronavirus is not. No audience participation. Thank you. Third question to Amy.
I think I still got a shot at that one.
Oh, yeah.
Stephen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sitting over here in Steve Rosenberg's seat, so I guess I can talk about.
I apologize. I apologize.
I think, you know, the city council, city manager form of government is the best, but it is dependent upon two-way communication. And when I come to city council meetings and I sit out here, which I've been doing for the last six months, there's a section in the meeting where city council manager, the city manager makes his comments to council. And council asks city manager questions, but it doesn't happen. And therefore, the people out here in the, in the audience are not aware of the communication. We do not see it. We are not aware of the transparency of discussions, discussing the issues. So consequently, we don't feel like we know what's going on. And I have been here for the past six months, virtually every meeting, and Steve Rosenberg does the will of the city council without a doubt. But we are not aware of him communicating what the problems are. Consequently, we don't think they're doing anything about it.
Okay. Third question, we'll start with Amy. There are many programs people in this crowd would like to see expanded, such as Stanton's recycling program, library services, increased energy independence, and regional rail and public transit. Of course, these require money. What are your thoughts regarding such programs and how would you like to see the city revenue methods be adjusted, if at all?
Well, first off, I know that I can't answer that whole entire question in sixty seconds. So I'm going to speak quickly to recycling and to rail. I think I'm going to start first with the rail. I think that is a tremendous opportunity for Stanton. I think that we need to give it enthusiastic support. I do think that it would be a major investment and that, you know, we would definitely have to look at our funding, but, you know, it's something that could potentially create jobs. It could provide a new source of revenue, it might help boost our tourism industry, as well as, you know, I don't know, it could alleviate some traffic issues along the eighty-one and sixty-four interstates. So I'm pretty excited about the new Afton Express, even though that's not rail. I think that's a really great service that's coming our way. So I just think that that's a really, has a lot of potential and that we should really give it some thought and support it and look into it and figure out how we could possibly make that work. As far as the recycling.
Time. Time.
I'm going to have to come back to that one because I have something to say.
I'll finish Amy's thought on recycling. Well, I'll give my thought then. I was dismayed when recycling left our city. Even the rather elementary level of recycling that we had, of which I was proud, went away. And it went away because the market for that recycled material went away. And the profit margin involved in getting it and reusing it dissipated. And it's not gone forever and efforts are underway, members of city staff are looking assiduously for other markets, other agencies, other companies that can replace the, at least back to the level of recycling that we had and hopefully beyond that. So I'm, and I'm totally in favor of that. I think that was a distinction that Stanton had in this valley and it's one that I hated to yield and want to give back. How much time do I have?
Five seconds.
So the library's great.
Thank you. Well, I'm starting with recycling and I will admit that I am not an aficionado on recycling. We have people that take care of that very well. I also was distressed when we had to discontinue our service. I am still distressed because it takes up too much room in my trash can and not being able to put it in a separate bin. So I'm hopeful that we can come up with something else. That's all I can offer on that. As Dr. Harrington said, we have a phenomenal library. We have, it does outreach in the summer to our children and makes sure books are going out to students everywhere. And I'll, again, really quickly, as far as trucks on rail, Stanton participated in helping make the inland port at Front Royal happen several years ago. I can't give you the exact year because I don't remember because, because we did see the need to get our trucks off the highways to make it safer for the citizens to move commuting up and down the highway. I don't know honestly how that's working now. I do know that a lot of trucks have stopped there.
All right, I'll start with rail. It's not something that I'm super knowledgeable about, but I do know that we need to continue to encourage legislation to invest in the infrastructure that we need to provide for that. And until then, something that the city could be doing is to continue to invest in the area around the depot and look for other ways to partner with regional stakeholders for that. But recycling, I know a lot more about, I did some research into that. And Senator Hanger actually put up three bills in the legislative session this year, two of which passed. One, let's see, one of those bills was to extend income tax credit for the purchase of equipment for processing recyclable materials and such as like a bailer. And that was actually something that Shenandoah Green, I don't know if we have any of the members here, Shenandoah Green, but that was part of the proposal that they brought to city council sometime last year. And so, and you'll hear this on repeat from me, collaboration with other community members and organizations to figure out how we can reduce, reuse, and recycle.
Okay, as far as rail, rail is good and it provides more services to the citizens, so that's great. The state has now taken it over from CSX, so let's bring it on to Stanton. I love it. Shenandoah Green has been phenomenal with pushing forward recycling processes within the city. I believe we need to look at a regional recycling center. Composting around the city I think is pertinent. Also, I wanted to let everyone know, if you did not know, the General Assembly has voted to allow the localities the ability to charge five cents for plastic bags. I think this is a move forward for the city. We do need to look at how the five cents is going to be broken down. It'd be great if the city could get all five cents and have absolutely no unfunded mandates by the state. That is something I'm very interested in. Plastic has become more than a nuisance, it has become a true concern, not only for Stanton and our landfill, but the country as a whole, and we need to take it seriously.
Time.
Thank you.
All right, yes, the library is great. The other thing I think we also need to look at rail. Virginia is, and as I understand, Virginia's still in the process of purchasing that, so all the details are not quite done yet. But the line's going to be going from the CSX, basically from Clifton Forge all the way up into Arlington. So coming through our area, yes, it's a very big possibility that we can possibly gain some money through that. The other thing is about the doing away with all the composting or the other stuff. There is other, other cities like, I believe it is Virginia Beach or Norfolk, they have gotten to the point where they are, actually have sided with an outside group that comes in, takes away the, all the recyclables. We don't have to pay a cent for it, they have their own employees, they have their own trucks, therefore we don't have to maintain them. And they haul it away, they sell it for profit, but we don't have to pay any money for that. So that is a possibility. There's a group we can look at.
All right. As far as the rail goes, any transport that we can get that will take cars off sixty-four and eighty-one is a lifesaver. The worst place to be is at the top of Afton Mountain at five o'clock at night. And so if we can get anybody off the road, we need to support this program. In the short run, I hear we have a three dollar bus fare going back and forth to Charlottesville that is being proposed, which I think is a wonderful program because I think that the railroad is going to take many years to finally get here. Recycling is great, let's keep it economically feasible, let's not stop examining all possibilities. I would love nothing more than to recycle more product, but right now, there's just, there's no funds for it. And as far as that library goes, it's not books anymore, it's everything, folks. It's an amazing building, they're doing a great job in our library service, we need to support it one hundred percent.
Every week, all of us takes in this much plastic through the water we drink and food we eat and even the air we breathe. That's an emergency. And so I'm so glad that citizens in Stanton want to do something about it. I would encourage us to look beyond recycling, which was never perfect anyway and is going to be very challenging right now, towards reduction. And the biggest problem with plastics is packaging. Plastics are a wonderful substance that we really can't live without at this point. We can transition away from them, but right now we need to reduce packaging. And I'm so glad the state passed the five cent bag tax. Look for more things like that that help us cut down our plastics. As far as clean energy goes, I'm working with a group in town now to help Stanton commit to a hundred percent clean electricity by twenty thirty-five and a hundred percent clean energy by twenty fifty. And this will complement what the state is doing with the Virginia Clean Economy Act that they just passed. It'll create jobs, it'll help raise our standard of living, it'll help families save money. We'll also do weatherization.
Time. Do I start with Amy?
No, you start with Jim.
Are you going to answer that question?
I did.
All right.
Moving on.
Same question? No, different question. Here we go. Stanton is a great place to live, I think we all can agree to that. But it also has its fair share of problems, just like any other community. What is both your favorite thing about Stanton and what is the largest challenge facing Stanton in building toward an equitable future?
Favorite thing about Stanton, I think, is, I would have to list the physical beauty of Stanton very high. And I'm not just talking about the wonderful. And I'm not just talking about the wonderful historical, well-restored buildings in downtown center city. I'm talking about the parks, eight of them, eight parks per city this size, two major, major parks, Montgomery Hall and Gypsy Hill, both of them gorgeous and devoted to separate kinds of activities, um, and a real, all real assets to the city. And beyond the parks, the plantings and every intersections and so forth, to me, it's just a very classy city. And along with that, I would, I would argue, and I don't know really what the source of it is, and would love to take credit for it if I could, but I don't think I can, that there is an air in Stanton that promotes creative activity and the gathering of people that are interested in creative endeavor. And you can see it everywhere. You can see it in Shakespeare Theater, you can see it in Heifetz's Stanton Music Festival. Did you say time?
Don't forget the challenge part.
If we can get it in right. So again, I have challenges to answer in one minute. Yeah. So Stanton is a beautiful city. When you talk and ask what is important about it or what is favorable about it, I tell people that through my career, I have been transferred out of Stanton five times. I only moved once. I was transferred to Newport News, to Richmond, to Rono, to Manassas, and then to New Jersey. That's when I had to move. Um, I never moved my family because I felt they needed to grow up, my children needed to grow up here because of the community that they were in. When I would come back from New Jersey, I could tell I was home, and this is because of the Shenandoah Valley, because of the mountains and the beauty of the serenity and the scenery that, that we had in the area. One thing I would like to see improve, um, I was looking at our numbers, and Stanton still has only a minority population of eleven percent. That distresses me because I choose to live here and, and I think it's a wonderful city for everybody, but for some reason, others aren't wanting to come.
Well, my favorite thing about Stanton is obviously the community, the members, a lot of you that I know that show up to help each other out, that do collaborative efforts to address real social problems, uh, so that we don't feel overwhelmed by it, um, and we're actually working and chipping away at some of those issues, uh, hand in hand. And I really like that feeling, I really like knowing that my neighbor has my back in very literal ways for me. One of the obstacles, actually, uh, it's very personal for me though, would be political rhetoric that drives us apart. Uh, anything that keeps us from being able to work with each other, to relate to each other on a human level, on a compassionate level, uh, that type of, um, community division is something that I think is an obstacle that I would like to work really hard to overcome through compassionate and constructive dialogue.
Okay, well, what I love about Stanton, the people, I mean, you guys are the folks that make Stanton what it is. I love the amenities, I love the fact that I can see a Shakespearean play one night and I can go to the Frontier Cultural Museum the next. I mean, there's so much to offer here in Stanton. Um, I would like for us to take a look at the corridor overlay. I support it, I believe that we need to have the aesthetics of Stanton to be beautiful and welcoming. However, I also am concerned that the corridor overlay might be, uh, too restrictive as far as businesses are concerned, and I'd like, uh, for us to take a look at it, and it's been several years, and potentially tweak it. So that's what I would like to see.
Well, Andrea, she, I think she read all my notes in my head. Um, at the sound of, you know, making flippant, uh, the people, I love the people. We don't always agree together, but that's what makes us so great as a, as a, as a citizenry. We can talk to each other, we don't agree sometimes politically, that's why we're running up here. But, uh, the people, the beauty of this city, uh, the other thing that I found is a challenge and is, you know, I keep on coming back to it, it's one of my main issues, is that we need to increase business. The city is not business welcoming a lot of times, it makes it too hard for businesses to try to start with all the regulations, the permitting issues. And if we can bring more and more people in, more businesses, make it easier to do that, then I think, uh, that will help increase, uh, our population and then a lot of other things.
My father-in-law, when he died, he had a wall hanging that said, "When I die, if heaven isn't as pretty as the Shenandoah Valley, I'm coming back." I think that applies to Stanton every bit as much. It's a beautiful city, the people are beautiful, and, and it's kept clean, we do a remarkable job in this city. That's why I like this city so much, that's why I wanna run for council to make it a better place. If there's any problem in this city, it's our lack of opportunity. We're losing our young people, they're leaving, they're going elsewhere to get better-paying jobs. And I hope that we can have a little growth in this town to stimulate things and not just worry about having a downtown, uh, streetscape that looks beautiful, but realize that we need jobs that are gonna pay for our kids to stay in this town.
What I like best about Stanton is two qualities, grits, balance with graciousness. Stanton's a gritty place, Stanton is a place that's made it through a lot of troubles, from the Civil War up through the present. When a lot of towns our size in the seventies and eighties were drying up and blowing away because all the money was getting sucked into big cities and suburbs, Stanton found a way to reinvent itself. And it reinvented itself through historic preservation, by going back to what was best about our past, graciousness. Our biggest challenge, we have jobs, as we've discussed, but we don't have enough high-paying jobs. And so in addition to clean energy, I would propose that we develop more tech jobs, which can be done over the internet, and people love to live in places like Stanton to do those jobs. Arts and culture goes back from, for a hundred and fifty years, two hundred years in Stanton. We need to develop our arts and culture sector more, and that will help us bring in more tourists who, as I said, bring in money and then leave.
Uh, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but for me, it's the, it's the people, it's the community, um, that makes Stanton such a wonderful place, a place that I've never wanted to, to leave, I've never wanted to live anywhere else, I love to travel, but I still get excited when I come home. And that's because Stanton is just unique. Um, and I think that it's because we have, we do, we have some of the most beautiful parks, um, that I can, kind of, think of, um, you know, and, and it's such a treasure for all of our citizenry, from young children, youth, all the way to senior citizens. Our rec department provides through our parks and other services so many opportunities, there's always something that someone can find, uh, that just suits their, their fancy, so to speak. Something that I think that, you know, we need to do better on is we just really need to have aggressive economic development efforts. Um, you know, we need to have some incentives to secure some really good business opportunities for folks.
Thank you. Is there an issue?
Well, I, I've been giving the pass since I am vice mayor of stating that I think we should take a five-minute break, we are over capacity. Uh, the fire chief is very concerned about that. So if we could take maybe a five-minute break and try to adjust it, I'm sorry to make this statement on your call, um, but.
We only have about eight minutes left and then it'll be.
We've got the reason. If we only have eight minutes left, we're gonna let it continue then.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And here are the eight minutes. Every person has an opportunity to, for sixty minutes, sixty seconds.
Thirty.
No, no.
You wanna do sixty?
Sixty-second closing remarks. So, um, let's see.
All right, so real quick, um, we each have our passions here for the city. Mine is, is housing. I've been in real estate development my entire life, from banking to financing to construction, so I know how hard it is to get a building permit. Um, but we talk about those that are in the fifteen percent. Um, my goal is to make sure that we can afford housing to all of our citizens, not just those that can buy the, the hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property. I've been talking with our, uh, executive director of the housing authority, I'm sorry, of Abitac, to see if there's not a way we can somehow go in and, and those houses that are, under the, the label of blight, we could possibly not remove people from them, but come up with a program to where we could save their house, do the financing for them and work out a way that they can stay in their house and bring other people into housing. So again, the city has many, many different issues, we each have our own platform, uh, and since I've been in real estate. Time. Forever, uh, that's my passion.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'm asking for you to vote for me for city council on May the, Nitch Norduzzi, pretty unique name, hopefully it'll stand out on the ballot, but I'm asking because I'm driven by compassionate action and see this as an opportunity to serve my community in bigger and more effective ways. I have both career and personal experience that has prepared me well for this job. And I can promise you that I will address every issue that comes in front of city council from as many different perspectives as possible through a critical questioning approach. I am a sociology major. So, uh, questions like, what does our community want? Why is it needed? Who does it help and who does it harm? What are other possibilities that there, there are to address the issue? And most importantly, can I sleep well at night knowing that I've weighed and measured the dimensions of each issue fairly in order to offer you wise counsel?
Okay, um, for me, it's about being able to review the corridor overlay. I support the corridor overlay, I support green space. I just wanna make sure that it is business-friendly and that we're not, um, excluding, um, businesses, um, from coming in to be able to offer jobs, to offer, um, revenue that could, um, offset the tax base. Which by the way, I think the taxes right now, I think they are at a perfect level and they need to maintain as such until shown otherwise with the economics coming down the road, uh, the federal, state, and local level. I wanna see, uh, more diversity, uh, within the government, um, at the local level, I wanna see our West End to be built up. Um, our downtowns, we love it, but let's, let's show some love all over the city. Um, I do support the recycling efforts, I do believe that we need to, uh, take a conscious look at, uh, the amount of plastic that's being used, uh, within the city. My job here is not finished, I mean, there's so much more that I had started with that I want to carry through.
Time.
But for Andrea Hoakes, thank you.
I just wanna tell you that, uh, as thirty-some years, thirty-four years, uh, as a healthcare provider and also as a businessman, I do this because I love people and I love this city. I was born and raised here and I think it's one of the greatest places in the Shenandoah Valley to live. I think we do have our few problems, we need, like I said, we need to help growth of Stanton, we do need to help grow the West End. I see businesses moving away and I hate that, because those people deserve, uh, to live in a, in a wonderful community as well. I also agree that we need to look at, uh, recycling, but more than anything, I just want us to, as the old saying used to say, can we just get along? We need to come together as a city and strive to work together as a cohesive unit. So I humbly ask you for your vote on May the fifth. Vote Mark Robertson. Thank you.
Once again, I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight and exchanging ideas. I am not a career politician, but I am passionate about Stanton. I seek to do the things city governments are supposed to do, pave the streets, ensure a sound water supply, provide quality education, have a friendly environment that makes people wanna live and work here. In order to do things, these things, we must spend our tax dollars wisely, invest in needs, not land speculation, watch our debt levels. It's time for a change. Our current city council is well-seasoned in these current issues, but there's still issues. It's time to do something different. Vote for Steve Kleffy on May fifth, please.
Thank you all so much for coming and for your interest. If you really like me to city council, I'll keep doing what I've been doing so far, which is working well with folks to keep Stanton moving forward, to keep your property values going up, to keep historic homes and properties getting fixed up, to keep our city looking prettier and being more prosperous. Stanton Crossing, it's sort of the big elephant in the room. I'll tell you that you have a real choice this year. Stanton has invested a lot of money in this project. You have a choice between folks who are willing to carry this project forward to its conclusion, and there's some very promising developments, and some folks who maybe, uh, would wanna take the city in a different direction. I can tell you that we've already paid down forty percent of the debt on Stanton Crossing, we're talking to some very promising businesses that are interested in the property, and it could ultimately lead to three thousand jobs and tax revenues of four million dollars annually. So since we've come so far, let's finish this project, vote for Eric Curran on May fifth. Thank you.
Well, I just wanna say, um, thank you again for letting me be here this evening. Four things that I really wanna stress in my, my campaign is responsible government spending, keeping Stanton affordable for all citizens, transparent local government, uh, and being responsive to the citizens, and creating a broad-based economic development and involving, uh, citizen input. So, uh, that's what I'm gonna be talking about through this campaign. For those that know me know that I, I will work hard, I will be a strong voice, and I will represent you well. Again, thank you for your time and vote Amy Darby on May fifth.
Thank you. In my opening comments, I listed one of three things that were my main motivators for running for reelection, so now I'm gonna list the other two. The first, as you will recall, was education. I think, as I said, we were on the, uh, threshold of something really, some really important developments with our public education system, and I wanna be a part of that, and I wanna aid it and, and help it. The other thing is West End. I think, I think similar things about our West End. I think that we have an energy out there and a potential out there and a willingness to consider ideas and options that offers us an opportunity as a city and offers that part of our city and the people who live there and own businesses there, a real opportunity to make something special of that part of our city moving forward, and I would like to be a part of that, have been a part of it already and wanna continue. The, the third thing is Stanton Crossing. As Eric said, uh, I think that it's, that's.
Time.
There's, there's another forum in April sometime.
Well, obeying the law. We are not gonna have time for, uh, audience participation, so I apologize for that, but guess what? Look at, look at what a wonderful crowd, that's the, you know.